Six o'clock, please rise for lunch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Good evening, it's May the fifth. First up is a public hearing regarding this franchise agreement renewal with Spectrum Northeast, which is potentially Charter Communications. Every ten years, the New York State requires us to rehab a hearing about this franchise agreement. Nothing has changed really with the franchise agreements, except there's some new names based on their LLC changes. So we will open up the public hearing. I think Seth, do you have to read the notice?
Um, oh, is it right here? Oh, um, the notice that the Village of Manans will hold a public hearing on May fifth, 2025, at six o'clock PM at Village Hall, um, second floor of 250 Broadway, Manans, New York, regarding renewal of the cable television franchise agreement by and between Village of Manans and Spectrum Northeast LLC, an indirect subsidiary of Charter Communications.
Okay, does anyone have any public comments regarding the franchise agreement with Spectrum Northeast? Bill?
I only can understand what's that really all about Spectrum Northeast LLC and the Village of Manans?
So basically Spectrum and Charter Communications has a franchise agreement with the village, which means we allow them to operate their cable uh and internet networks within the village. And they pay us franchise fees as part of the utility tax as part of that agreement.
Alright, so for economic, general welfare and quality of life reasons, alright, I'll support it. Thanks for letting me speak.
Anyone else? Only we could get one with Verizon this morning. Close of public hearing at six oh one. Let's see, so our regular board meeting. First, we need a motion for the minutes from four twenty-one.
A motion?
Second, all those in favor?
Alright. I will abstain for the absence.
Warrants and payroll.
Hold on, you know what, I was also, I was also absent, yeah, I'll be extended as well.
Wants to hit it. Mary Jane, you want to read the warrants? Payroll, want to do that part?
Sure. Warrant number twenty-three, general totaling seventy-one thousand two eighty-eight eighty-three, water totaling forty-four thousand eight ninety-nine sixty-three, sewer totaling twenty thousand three forty-two eighty, for a total of one hundred and thirty-six thousand five thirty-one twenty-nine. Payroll number twenty-four totaling one hundred and twenty-seven thousand two sixty-seven fifty.
A motion?
Second, all those in favor? Any opposed? You have a number of transfers. Go ahead and read those, please.
If you want to mean it.
It doesn't mean, how do you want me to do that, Mayor? Do you want me to just say like from a capital?
Yeah, let's just do the ones that balance across and then, um.
Okay.
You're going to have to read the account number.
Okay. So from court miscellaneous to the mayor's congressional line, two thousand seven forty-three eighty-six. From equipment miscellaneous to supplies, five hundred and thirty-eight eighty-two. From payroll services to insurance, a hundred and eighty-six dollars. From miscellaneous to contracted services, one thousand four eighteen seventy-four. From deputy clerk treasurer to personnel services, four thousand four twenty-two sixty-eight. From deputy clerk treasurer to overtime administrative assistant, one thousand four eighty-seven ninety-eight. From contractual law to assistant village attorney, two thousand dollars. From gas and electric to insurance, three hundred and fifty-eight oh eight. From full-time patrolman to part-time patrolman, six thousand five oh nine twenty-three. And from full-time patrolman to police overtime, seven thousand seven seventy-four twenty-six. From miscellaneous equipment to the police car, twenty-five thousand fifty-eight forty-four. From gas and oil to uniform allowance, five thousand eight thirty-five fourteen. From equipment to vehicle maintenance, ten thousand one thirty twenty-one. And the grant writer to gas and electric, five thousand. From EMS supplies to medical physicals, two hundred dollars. From recruitment and retention to equipment repairs, two thousand two hundred twenty-eight. From miscellaneous to gas and electric, two thousand five thirty-two seventy-four. From uniform allowance to supplies, five thirty-six thirty-five. From placement trees to stone and gravel, one thousand four ninety-six fifty-eight. From paving to signs, two thousand one sixty-nine sixty-three. From gas and electric to building maintenance, three thirty-seven sixty-three. From OSHA clothing to drug testing, two hundred and thirty dollars. From economic development to gas and electric, five hundred and fifty-five forty-two. From miscellaneous to insurance, three dollars. From supplies to personnel, forty-eight dollars. From transportation to miscellaneous, six thirty-nine forty-three. From gas and oil to vehicle maintenance, four thousand six eighty-five forty-seven. From dental insurance to medical insurance, five thousand nine fifty-seven eighty-eight. In the water fund, from maintenance to gas and oil, five seventy-four eighty-five. Hydrants to water meters, nine sixty-three eighty-six. Maintenance of controls to pipe and sleeve, two thousand three twenty-nine fifty-four. And then sewer fund, deputy clerk treasurer to miscellaneous, two thousand seven hundred dollars and nineteen cents.
Make the motion.
So the reason, hold on, the reason for all of these transfers is because this is the last month of the financial year and these are, these are to make sure that we have funds in all these different accounts.
There are like budget shortfalls in the category, so.
Sorry, go ahead.
Uh, Tim, uh, made the motion, I second.
I just have a question. So the only, it looks like they all came from like the same accounts, just transferring by the budget line, except for the one for the gas and electric from the economic development account. Like what this seven one one oh is that? It's the part for that, okay. Okay, thank you.
All those in favor? Hopefully next year, we're not gonna, everything's gonna stay within.
Yeah, no, if they all stayed within like the main account, we're just, but that one.
Yep, thank you.
Southern Water Project, Brooklyn.
Here we are.
Here we are.
Nine years in the making.
Members of the board, uh, Rupert Hall with LaBella Associates. With me tonight is, uh, Jordan Bush from my office. Uh, George has been working with me for, with our team for the last two years now, cutting his teeth on this project, so, uh, this is a signature project already, he's never gonna do a better one in history. A little bit of a brief background, as Brian alluded to, the, this project's been around for about eight or nine years. Was originally funded, uh, many years ago, a grant was received for, uh, for both for sewer component and water component. The project includes, um, Wolfert, Amsterdam, Hendrick and the side streets off of those, Hampton, Kingston, Pauling, um, I might be missing one or two, but it's generally the South End neighborhood that's, that's bound by those areas. This was originally intended to go to bid less a year ago in January. And as we were looking at pricing, from the time that this was originally priced out and the grants were received, uh, construction costs had gone up by about forty percent. So we came back to this board and to mayor, spoke with the mayor, and we worked out a plan to retool the project in a way that you would be able to get something done because the project exceeded the budget that was allocated between what the, the bonding that the village has done and the grants that were there. So what we did is we pulled the project back and we broke it into phases and sub-phases. And over the last year, we've been retooling it, we've been doing some value engineering to, um, help get those prices down. And we ended up putting it on the street as a base bid, which essentially included, uh, Wolfert and Amsterdam and the side streets that are off of those, and then a series of alternates. And that way, a contractor was able to price out the base bid, which is if that's all you did, you would get, you know, sixty percent of your project or seventy percent. And then we had a series of alternates. And the strategy was build the project, when the bids come in, look at what the funding can support between that base bid and the many alternates. We also spent the last year, um, negotiating with the funding agency. Um, this funding agency typically doesn't like to give out money for what would be a partial project. If you reduce the scope of the project, they typically want to pare back the dollar value as well. We were able, and, and the mayor was very integral in doing this, is we were able to, after a series of meetings over three or four months, we were able to get the funding agency to agree to the funding and build the project for, for what that funding will be able to support. So that's where we are tonight. Uh, bids were opened on April third, we had four bidders that bid on the project. Um, as we started looking at the bids within the first week, we started having some concerns with the low bidder. Uh, we were seeing a, a, a pattern of dollar value, but the numbers were very good. And, um, I will tell you, the mayor was about as excited as I've seen him since I've been working in the, the village. But they were good for a reason, and because we, we felt there was something amiss in the bid. So after about two weeks of reviewing it and some back and forth with the contractor, we held a meeting with the contractor and with the mayor and laid our concerns out, the concerns that we had with their bid numbers. And if, and we left it to the contractor to go back and review their bid, which they did, three days later, they submitted a letter requesting to withdraw their bid. And we don't want to speculate what exactly was amiss, but we feel that there was something either in the scope of order that they undervalued or in the pricing that they missed. But, um, so we immediately went to the number two, the second bidder, evaluated, and within three days, we were able to put together a recommendation that would support that, um, that contractor. Then last week, we had a meeting with the financial advisor who's working on this project. And what was concluded is that you can, you can award the project with the base bid, which is Wolfert and Amsterdam and those side streets, and alternate one, which is, uh, Hendrick. And then leave alternates two through five as a potential to be able to done, to be done if there's more money that is, um, if you're able to either find additional funding, grants, work at it from your general budget, however you would do that, we have time to be able to put those back in over the next two years as the contractor is out there. So that's our recommendation, is awarding the bid for the, uh, the amount of nine hundred, nine million eight hundred forty-four thousand thirty-two dollars and forty cents, which is base bid and alternate one. And that will give you, again, the, the project that is, um, within the amount between your grant and the bond, um, the bonding that you've already authorized. We do have, we, we're gonna go back, and I know the mayor's gonna look at the other alternates and this and kind of feel out how the long-term financing will ultimately.
Don put in the full amount, that's not what we're awarding. It's the full, full amount, so Ruben is talking about in his letter, which is included.
Yeah, can you give us, uh, the base bid and alternate one, and then the total so that we would do?
Do you have those, like that breakdown?
Yeah, the.
Base bid for Newcastle's eight thousand eight hundred fifty dollars, eight forty-two forty.
I see that, yeah.
Plus alternate one, which is nine hundred, right?
Yeah, nine nine three one nine zero.
Nine nine three one nine zero?
So whatever the total of that is, is what, uh, is what we.
That's our goal.
Number you read, nine million eight hundred.
Is it, is that?
Can you, can you just say, say that again?
The total.
Uh, nine million eight four four, yeah, zero three two and forty cents. Track down forty cents.
I have, I have that in my car.
Again, we, we, go ahead.
So, so the, the last thing I was gonna state is, again, this project and the financing board is not necessarily done with this recommendation and resolution, or again, whatever the disposition is to do tonight, because we are gonna work with the mayor and with the financing and the, and the funding agency to see how the long-term financing will ultimately pan out with regard to how this ends up impacting the water rates, sewer rates, and what available, um, contingencies that we have in this project. So it is, it is conceivable that as we go through and we have a tight construction, there are contingencies built in the project that then could be rolled into one or four of those alternates. Or again, if you've come up as a village and you decide that you want to do one of these, this, it can be added back in as a change order to the, to the contractor. So the, the message being is that, wanna get this going, we wanna get it started, we wanna get shovels in the ground. This is a way to do it within what you've already authorized, within what the grant has, but doesn't shut the door on the rest of it.
And I went there personally to EFC to beg, uh, and, uh, had a nice conversation with one of their executives. And it was clear that they didn't want to talk about anything else until there's dirt flying and stuff is being done. So essentially, that's what this recommendation gives us, is the opportunity to start doing some work. And, uh, and, and when we run out of money, we run out of money and we need to then reevaluate how we proceed further. It's the only way to start doing something and not let this, this, the price just continue to escalate, so. So does any of the board have any questions?
I do, alright, so as, you know, if we do get the opportunity to move on, change orders, et cetera, the, what the, the, the figure that was provided to us, you know, was generally gonna be what the, what the contractor will opt out and work within and.
Right, and, and within latitude, there are four alternates and those have pricing, and those pricing were based on what they bid a month ago. If we decide in eighteen months, we want to add something back, there might be a, you know, some change to that number. But I think it gives you.
Outside of what we initially said, okay, other than that, if there's nothing else new added, et cetera.
Exactly.
Okay, what is the total contingency, uh, that's built into the base plus alternate one?
There's, there was seven hundred thousand dollars built into the entire project, but that also included some contingency in the alternates that we were not recommending, so maybe seventeen percent of that.
Most of it was in the basement.
Okay.
Say that again?
It'll be between five and six hundred thousand, most of it was in the basement for the contingencies, but I can.
So, again, that's if, if those unfortunate circumstances don't happen, which there will be some that happen, we won't necessarily use that funding and that will help us stretch to, you know, this project even further.
Yes, it, it does make me feel a lot better that, you know, we can at least start to move forward and then things are going well and we'll find that additional funding, we can move forward on, on the other end and work out plans and we're not, we're not stuck trying to, you know, we have alternatives and, you know, it's all, it's all gonna flood it out. Yeah, that's, that's very comforting. And that's what we, we stepped back a year ago and we had to take a different approach with it because if you didn't, you probably would have been in the same boat again this year, where another year goes by, things are gonna get more expensive and you're gonna lose more of the project. So sooner this, like, the sooner the shovels are in the ground, um, we have firm numbers now. We know what this project's going to cost and we have an idea of what it would take to build a little bit more into it.
Um, I did renew my request and Congressman Tonko did put in for 2026 the amount that he awarded us for 2025 that we did not get because there is no federal budget and that's an amount of a million one oh five three hundred, a million one hundred five thousand eight hundred. So again, that will help go into this project to help, and I think that amount alone will accomplish several of the two to five.
Yes, yeah, there's about one and a half million dollars left remaining on alternative two through five. Yeah.
So hopefully there is a federal budget for 2026. And by the time we get to that point in this project, uh, hopefully that money will be awarded in a federal budget and we can actually use that to help get to the finish line without borrowing.
That would be good.
I wanted, I wanted to address something that Diane McFarland had said, uh, I believe it was at the last meeting about the contractor vetting the contractor. Um, that was something that I, I did, uh, for you in the past couple of weeks. Uh, this contractor has not only done, uh, work for us in the past that we've been very happy with, but they've done work with the Seal of Albany, they've been, uh, happy with that, uh, Gildiling, um, the, uh, uh, Village of Colony, they've done, uh, work for them. And I've, have, a, a, between that and, and the work that we've had, I have no reservations about, about this contractor. So Newcastle, um, I am very, um, I'm, I'm confident in that. If I, they were paving my neighbor, if we were having my neighbor in cave, this is who I was.
I'll, I'll add to that, Seth, that we're working on a project currently that's in construction in the Village of Scotia that was supposed to be done last fall. We ran into a hiccup with National Grid, with the utility company, in coordinating our project for their gas line. And Newcastle, who's a contractor from that, has been very good every step of the way to work with us to help get that project and keep it alive, um, and, and continue with it. So again, as in that community, again, we're representing the Village of Scotia and we're equally vetting what Newcastle is doing there, but I will vouch for them in the sense of they've been a team player, it hasn't felt like an us versus them on that.
Yeah, good, and that's, that's what, what we want, not, uh, something where we're worried about, uh, why are they low, or why are they, uh, so I'm very happy. I remember, uh, we used them when they were new to the Albany market and, uh, we were told they're, they're very new. We don't have a lot of, um, uh, a lot of examples of their projects, but, um, we took a risk on them back then, it was, it's been good ever since.
Um, I just have a question, so I know, obviously, we've been going back and forth about the pricing and trying to get as much done of it as we can. Where did we, outside of like the basic stuff, where did we land with like the curbs, like that kind of stuff in this base project? Like, there was like discussion about different kinds of curbs, we're gonna look at what we could do?
Yes, the project as it is designed and reconstructed, uh, where there's full reconstruction includes replacement of the curb, it will be a concrete curb. And then which, Jordan, which, which streets are getting curbed by?
So, yeah, base bed will be all new concrete curb, and the alternate on Hendrick is gonna be where we need to excavate for service laterals for the water main. It's gonna get replaced with granite curb, um, like it is now. Which portions of reusable granite curb from the base bed will be saved to be reused.
I know there's no comment, I'm sorry, Ryan, I'm not trying, you know, I'm a fan of the South End project, I gotta say.
So my understanding is, is again, when the, in the base bid area, there will be some required sidewalk replacement because of just how we're gonna be doing, how much.
The service line, yeah, Jordan. Yeah, again, service laterals, um, where you're gonna get channel replacement. And then also there's a section on North Pearl where the water main replacement is actually within or underneath the sidewalk, um, in one spot, so that, that whole sidewalk is gonna be replaced.
Curve intersections, that counts?
Uh, yes.
Each intersection, yeah, so there.
All the intersections are gonna need curbed and repulsed.
Do, I'm sorry, I, I do have another question. In, in, in regards to the service laterals, to the, to the residents' homes now, there was some discussion about, you know, because of increased water pressure, some of the older laterals might need to be replaced. So is there a plan for, you know, letting residents know if they want to do that, time the work is being done? You know, they may want to consider doing it at that time because that, that would be a fair cost, is that, is that, uh, and would the contractor, Newcastle, would they have to hire their own person?
It would, ideally, it would be, the homeowners would hire their own. So this project will replace all of the service lines from the new main in the street to the curb, and including the curb box, so the, the shut-off valve will be turned, will be replaced. But the line from the shut-off valve to the house will not. If a resident wants to do that at the time, um, right now, we don't have a mechanism to add that into the project. It is something that could be entertained, or it could be something.
Well, that's not necessarily what I'm suggesting, it's just to let people know this is something they may want to think about.
Yeah.
So, you know, I mean, is that, should that be a concern about the water pressure increasing and there?
The way I would answer that would be is that we're gonna have a very detailed schedule from the contractor that's gonna go through what they're gonna do, street by street and almost house by house, lot by lot. And so we will know months ahead of time when they're going to be there. But I think, again, it would be to the homeowner's discretion as to whether or not they do want to do it, although I know there are a handful that are lead lines that we're working out, how those can be replaced separately because technically, once you're in there making that change, under the regulation, you're obligated, it's obligated to get that one, those changed. So, and, but that's being viewed as a separate batch of projects that would then be outside of this project, um, that really can be done by a plumber as opposed to a contractor.
Right, I just wanted to be, you know, have a means for letting people know this is something they want to think about if they don't.
I just letter from the village, and we should.
Yeah, well, I mean, as we get closer to, first tonight is obviously awarding the bid, and we have to go and go contractor, notify them of the schedule, and they have to, you know, I mean, this, so there's, there's, eventually we'll be communicating something similar to we did, that we did before, house to house, uh, just with a little bit more clarity as to when.
Yeah, right, right, yes. Yeah, and we will have, um, effectively three people on this project, assuming you approve the other thing that's in front of you, which is our construction phase proposal. But part of what we will be doing is we're going to have three people that are gonna be working on this between in the field and in office to, uh, to make sure that everything is being, one, done properly in the field, and two, being ahead of the contractor with regard to schedule so that you can make these proactive, um, neighborhood notifications or individuals. Some, some might be right down to the, the single homeowner that might have an anomaly in terms of what's in front of their house. That's gonna have a disruption, you're gonna want to let them know not the morning that it happened. So that's part of what our team is gonna be working on as well, is staying at the contractor with those disruptions and with those, um, uh, items that you're gonna want to let somebody know so that somebody doesn't wake up and find out they don't have water that morning.
Um, was there a second, uh, resolution for LaBella's piece that we were supposed to talk about tonight?
Uh, we did send it separately, uh, so there's a separate, and maybe it was not in here. It was in the same email, but it was a separate letter.
Don did not include it in his script, so. So, alright, uh, let's first award the contract and then. I agree, so can we wait on that piece and award the bid tonight and then award that next meeting?
Yes, we'll keep working for you.
I will, I will proudly, uh, make a motion to award the South End Water Sewer Project Newcastle paving at a cost of nine million eight hundred forty-four thousand thirty-two dollars and forty cents.
Second, all those in favor? We can follow up with Don and just get that secondary piece?
Yeah.
Get that.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. You guys have anything else?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nine years.
Thank you all.
Yes.
How quickly can we get a, uh, notification to Newcastle that, uh?
They already did.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because they had some questions that they wanted to hop on, uh, on the. Cause they had some questions that they wanted to hop on, uh, on about, right?
Right, so the, the process is you've just voted essentially to do this. There'll be a notice of award and then there will be a contract signing. There'll be two, there'll be, the notice of award essentially says Newcastle, you're being selected. And then I believe you're authorizing the mayor to sign the contract on behalf.
We've already started asking them questions.
Oh, yes, yeah, we, we had, we needed insurance information. We need their WBE plan and others, so we've already started that work. Great, thank you.
And we did get Louise's formal resignation here on control.
Yes, yeah, Don needed that for controller's office, I believe.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Brian, are we skipping 98?
98 Menand Road is not ready. Dan Hersberg is working on their final, or their submission to us to explain that. We'll table that till 5:21.
Juniper switches.
Juniper switches, Brian, you're up.
All right, get up, move. Uh, we're talking about the village network infrastructure, uh, particularly the, uh, proposal, about four or five, four or five that's in front of you, uh, individuals there. This proposal is covers basically the network, uh, switching infrastructure here at Village Hall as well as, uh, right here at 250 Broadway, well, it's at, uh, 280 Broadway. Essentially, it's currently the, the networking equipment that basically connects the wireless access points, the computers, all that stuff is end of life, is actually end of life last year. Uh, as you know, there was a piece of equipment that failed about a month ago and unfortunately we can't call to get support, it can't get replaced. And the village is currently operating on a loner network equipment from us at ABS. Uh, so we were, we, we proposal essentially to replace the equipment here at, uh, at the police department as well as the village hall, actually, back, one moment. Replace network here at Village Hall. We take one piece of equipment that is not end of life yet, which is technically, uh, down the hall here at the court offices, we bring that, um, and re-licens that and replace some equipment over at the, uh, 280 Broadway. So that's the network components. Uh, it's a proposal that also includes our professional services installation. And we get the village set up with some, an additional cloud management and battery backups that are also included this, as well too.
Now, this was in next year's budget, start at 6:01.
Correct, yes.
And we're, we're just, we're taking the money out of that budget, correct? But we're just authorizing it now to get, okay.
That's correct, yes.
So this was something that Don included in his budget for next year.
Sure, sure, correct.
Uh, just as, uh, with the collapse of the switch, which put us down for about a day.
Something like that, yeah.
At 280, we're just moving this all up.
Correct.
And the rotation. Uh, anyone questions?
I think there were two proposals, so we're just talking about the one?
Yeah, the one is the, that just we broke it into two, two components. The first one being the network switches, boxes with blinking lights that connect, connect everything together. The second proposal is for the wireless access points.
But they're both, what, in both of them, sorry?
Yeah.
Are they doing them both sides?
Yeah, I think they're both for next year's money.
Yeah, okay, correct, all right.
Thirty-six thousand.
I will admit, I guess Brian would do for squishy, so.
Thought I had one in my yard, but.
It's not a shrub.
So we're approving this, but it's not being paid until after.
So I moved, uh, to approve the juniper switches at access points at a cost of thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
I'll second.
All those a favor. So we're good. You take back your, your, uh, your honor.
We'll get the new one in first, then we'll take the older back.
And then there's one piece that's being repurposed, correct?
Correct, yes, the, uh, one of the switches that's, that's, uh, one that's actually here. It's gets moved up to the second floor on this one.
Thank you. Okay, uh, I know the spectrum agreement is long and boring. Uh, does anyone have any questions, comments about renewing it? Another, another period, all right, anyone motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
All those a favor. Um, we've talked, uh, uh, about the command staff. Uh, that's Ryan and Kevin being represented by Council 82, which is essentially a union similar to what the PVA is represented by. They can't be represented by the same council, obviously, because as management, there will be a conflict there. Uh, essentially, by becoming management, chief and lieutenant lose several, several items as, uh, when they take that permit, that promotion. They, they lose vacation time, uh, medical coverage, uh, uh, after, you know, it says, it says after, uh, a longer period of time. Uh, they don't get overtime, they don't get uniform allowance, uh, they don't get comp time, et cetera. Um, and, and they're not asking for any of these things, but, but they'd like to just simply be represented as, uh, by a union. Uh, not because we have any managerial problems, uh, but simply that, they'd like to just be sure that they, uh, have the ability to come to the board, uh, and air grievances, if there are any grievances, not just at this administration, but, but in future administrations. Um, the, uh, I spoke with Bill Wallens, who's our attorney at, uh, Romer Wallens and Associates, uh, about, you know, what's, what, what basically is this? What would be the downside to the, to the, uh, to the possibility of allowing them union representation? Currently, they're covered by, uh, civil service anyway. They take a civil service test in order to be in those positions. Uh, so they are awarded, they, they are afforded civil service protections as it is. The council just would simply add another, you know, another possibility and give them, uh, the option to pay dues to the, to, to the, uh, to the union. And if there are grievances, the union would then represent them, uh, as part of the union instead of them having to pay for council expenses on their, on the, out of their own pocket. I'm asking Bill if there are any negatives to allowing them to do this. Bill's really only concern is that we, we give up some control. And discussing what really that control is, it's the same control we would not have because they're civil service.
Correct.
Um, and, and so, you know, the board had talked about it, uh, uh, as an executive, uh, session matter, this personnel matter, and so we're just kind of rehashing it in the public eye so that, uh, so that we, uh, you know, that the discussion therein is, is public. So.
I just have a question, because I thought they were asking, all that they were asking for us to do was to allow them to seek out becoming part of the union. I didn't understand, we were just like agreeing to automatically represent them.
They wish to be represented by council.
So they would just, uh, fill out their own union cards unanimously, they would be.
We are simply authorizing them to reach out to Council 82 and, and to organize under Council 82 if they so choose.
Yeah. And as the board knows, I took an entire class and wrote a research paper on this very topic in college. And, um, there were only positive results in the major municipalities that, uh, that granted their, uh, police leadership, uh, their own union. Um, so from that, um, I've also, I also reached out to the dean of the School of Industrial and Labor Relations to see if anything major changed, if there are any, um, major changes in the research and findings since then. And he said no. So, um, personally, I see no downside for, for the village. Uh, Mary Jane actually asked me a good question. Um, the only thing, uh, where does the money come from, from Council 82? They pay, they'll pay union dues from their paycheck. So, uh, so it doesn't actually cost the village anything.
So Troy, Troy's management is represented by Council 82. Colony's, uh, police management is, is represented by Council 82. Uh, so there's, it's not like we're, we're allowing them to do anything that's not, uh, common practice in our area.
So I guess I misunderstood what they were asking and what we were going to vote on. So can we table this so that I can look into this a little bit more before we take a vote on?
Um, I would prefer that we don't do that. I believe there's votes that we were all in support of this and I believe everyone's had adequate time to look into what exactly this was.
I just told you that I misunderstood.
Well, I'm sorry that you misunderstood. Is there a motion to join Council 82?
I'll make a motion to join Council 82, that, uh, for the, to, for them to recognize, uh, art and staff.
I'll second that.
All those a favor. Any opposed?
Me.
Hi.
The CDT A rights share agreement, we're going to table that. No, no more, no more information than I had.
Regarding the numbers, what is the timeframe?
That's for one year. The Albany County Hazard Mitigation Plan, uh, was filed with Albany County.
Wait, it did, uh, sorry, Brian, uh, we're tabling the CDT As.
Yes, okay. A copy of the Hazard Mitigation Plan was, uh, Don included in the.
Yes. I think I get to page 20, I'm like, wait a minute.
Uh, it includes participation. It was a lot of meetings that we, uh, participated with, with them in order to make sure we were all on the same page and united with all of the Albany County municipalities for that. Uh, do we need to have motion, motion for accepting that?
I think so.
Okay, so anyone want to read that?
I can do it. Uh, gonna enter the following, uh, resolution adopting the 2025 Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. Whereas the Village of Menands recognizes the threat that nat- natural hazards pose to people and property within the Village of Menands. And whereas the Village of Menands has prepared a multi-hazard mitigation plan, hereby known as the 2025 Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan in accordance with the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. And whereas the 2025 Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan identifies mitigation goals and actions to reduce or eliminate long-term risk to people and property in Menands from the impacts of future hazards and disasters. And whereas adoption by the Village of Menands demonstrates their commitment to hazard mitigation and achieving the goals outlined in the, uh, plan. Now therefore, being resolved by the Village of Menands, uh, that Section 1 in the, in accordance with Home Rule, the Village of Menands adopts the 2025 Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. This plan approved by the community may be edited or amended after submission for review, but will not require the community to re-adopt any further iterations. This only applies to the specific plan and does not absolve the community from updating the plan in five years.
Second.
I, I moved it.
All those a favor.
All right.
Any opposed?
I suppose that the exercise we did with the, uh, the, uh, train and evacuation was along these lines.
Yes, flood, flood events, uh. It's exciting reading the whole thing, so. But they have to do it, so we participated in that effort with other municipalities. Where we now. Where are we going? Uh, the large tree by the basketball court that we voted to take down should be taken down as soon as rain stops, whenever the heck that is. Uh, we did tentatively finish the remediation of the tire pond. I think they pulled close to a thousand tires out of there, uh, and, uh, took way longer than expected, but seemingly is, uh, is completed. We're going to get clearance from DEC on that.
Did they go back for that second round?
They did, yes. As soon as the murky water clears, there was, uh, more tires were found, but, well. The Albany County Healthcare Consortium, we will be signing, uh, a tentative participation agreement on, you say Wednesday, Tim?
Yes.
Wednesday, uh, with other municipalities to start the process to form the consortium. And, uh, we are very hopeful that next year's insurance rates will be, uh, much more competitive for us than, uh, than just CDPHP, so that'll, that's been years and years in the making, so that's exciting. Uh, Tim and I will be, will be participating in that. It doesn't sign us up for anything, it just starts the process to form the consortium. Uh, KPI finally completed the camera work for Menand Road and the sewer line that runs from the Town of Colony's interceptor at the Daughters of Charity all the way down to Broadway. The line is actually in better condition than we initially thought. Colony will be paying half of the invoice and that invoice was included in the doctors, uh, for today. Colony will be paying for their half. And we will be working towards a final plan for, uh, ongoing maintenance of that line. I am still working with the Town of Colony on the annual, uh, charges that they pay the village for use of that line. Hope, hoping that they agree that $4 as arranged in 1970 is not, uh, the same as $4 today. So I'll be working on that, or Mary Jane will beat me tomorrow, getting that letter done for them, so. Uh, Tim and I have a meeting with Albany DOT Region 1 to, uh, as an update for the Troy Menand Bridge, 378 Bridge, uh, study. Uh, we're going to be talking about what the next steps on with that are. That's, uh, what, the 20th at 1 o'clock?
And they're coming here.
They're coming to, yeah, they're coming to us. Uh, Lobella did submit the, uh, the tentative grant, uh, structure for folks with their parks funding. Uh, and, uh, along the lines of what we agreed to last, uh, last meeting, I'll be forwarding everyone a copy of that application in full as soon as Matt gives it to me. We have pulled together the names for the, uh, I can't see the two of you, uh, for the, uh, folks with their park committee. Uh, I'll be giving everybody an email and setting up the first meeting, uh, sometime very, very soon. Get that rolling. Scooter's letter. I had a management meeting with all the department heads, something we're going to be doing every month going forward. Uh, all the department heads came together and we all talked about some of the things that are going on in our respective departments as a group that was productive. In June of 2026, New York State will require all municipalities to adopt a domain, a website domain that is .gov. We are well ahead of the group because we've already done that.
Thank you for doing that, it's long overdue.
Amen, it, it works out a lot better.
Yes.
Emily in the, uh, court office has given her resignation. She has taken a job with Bethlehem Town Court and her last date will be May 16th. We're working with Susan and, uh, potentially Dave Watson and anyone else who will fill in to, uh, fill in for the court until the court closes on the 7th of July. And we are working with the OCA Administrator to help with that transition.
How's that going so far?
Slow.
Yes, always.
Colony has had some court changes themselves with, uh, a judge resigning and, and, uh, so they have some other problems over there that they're dealing with. Uh, I'll leave the Albany County IDA Alliance 2024 Annual Report at the office for anyone to read. It mentions, uh, several projects which were here in the Village of Menands, including Regeneron, Mailworks. Uh, and, uh, provides some good, good feedback about projects going on in the village on behalf of Albany County. The Menands Monthly should have hit everybody today. Uh, a few days late or a week late, really, it should, it should, should really be hitting at the end of the month, but, uh, some great content in there. uh, some great content in there. Uh, anyone who's receiving multiple copies, please let the office know and Don will fix that. Um, I think that is just about.
Are there extra copies?
We have, we, we have a hundred extra copies.
I told you, J, you could stop.
Yes, uh, we, we used to print extra copies of the activities for the school, for the library, et cetera. Uh, they didn't know about the overruns, so I think, I think they produced an extra hundred copies. I'll make sure that we get.
Any update on a new project?
Not yet, but tomorrow. Billy, you available for a conversation tomorrow?
Hello? Whatever you need.
So, thank you. Uh, that is it for me. Tim?
Uh, the only, I wanted to mention, I did speak with Matt Rogers. I'm sorry I wasn't at the last meeting when he gave his presentation on the little river. But, uh, it, it looked good, and I just wanted to ask him about the next steps. And, uh, at this point, he's gotta get together with the staff. They, they have landscaping staff that have to work out numbers for how much the plan would cost. So before we, uh, take any action to formally approve the proposal, he wants to put that together and, and get it back to us. So he said that should be within the next couple, so hopefully by, uh, the first meeting is killed, not, not the, the next meeting. So, that's more.
Next step?
Next, uh, question regarding the work being done at Broadway, at the Broadway, were we shown any underwings for?
It's on my wall.
And also, um, the, uh, fire department is hosting a home sprinkler system demonstration on May thirteenth. Uh, went to Broadway and over for parking lot at six P M. So I'm pretty sure New York State will require new buildings, new residential buildings to have, uh, home sprinkler systems being installed, so. We're.
Be interesting to see how they get people to pay for that.
Yeah, well, it's gonna be new dwellments, not current, but still.
Makes the building houses a lot more expensive.
She says the thirteen does this again.
Um, definitely. So I had a, uh, very interesting tour of the Mohawk Hudson Humane Society, uh, this afternoon after work. Uh, it's amazing what they do there, um, for the greater community as, as well as the village. Uh, uh, what the public sees when they walk in is literally just the tip of the iceberg. Uh, the, uh, I got a full tour, the, uh, back of the house, which is probably two-thirds of the building, uh, from, um, observation rooms, intake rooms, the number of animals that they get from neglect, uh, an owner passing away, uh, someone who just can't care, uh, for the animal anymore, um, the, uh, the assistance they provide uh, people who can't get in to see a vet, whether it be for spay and neuter, uh, surgery, or even end-of-life, uh, procedures. Um, it's, uh, it's, it's incredible, as well as the adoption program, helping to pair the, uh, pair families up with an animal that would, uh, meet their needs. Uh, but best of all, the feeling that I got, this was a warm and welcoming place. This was not, um, this was not, uh, what you see in movies when you think of, uh, the pound, a kennel, those kinds of things. It, it's those animals were not only well cared for, but their living quarters were, were nice for them. And, uh, and even down to how, um, they fostered them. I, I, I didn't even realize what was involved in that. Um, I was proud to take a picture with the executive director in front of the Brian Amarch Room. Uh, I didn't know that that was, uh, that was a thing, but, um, I, I remember, uh, the board approved, uh, this building back in twenty sixteen, opened in twenty seventeen. Um, I was on the board. Um, there was a board member at the time, not here, said they don't, um, they don't do anything for our community. Um, I strongly disagree with that, especially after, uh, today. They, they very much do, and I'm glad that we approved that. They're now looking, believe it or not, to expand. Um, there are new programs they want to offer. That's a good problem to have. Um, so I think that is, that's wonderful, as, as well as, um, the, the other cool thing. They've been there longer than the Village of Manans has been incorporated. That blew my mind. And they had been in that very same building since, um, nineteen oh, nineteen oh-three until twenty seventeen, when they moved into their current building. So, uh, they, it really grew nicely there. So, uh, what I, what I learned, I said, you know, what can the Village of Manans do for this organization? And really, they have so many opportunities for volunteers, uh, whether you wanna work directly with the animals or maybe you don't. I saw a group of students there preparing the doggy treats. Uh, they don't make themselves, they don't buy them, they make them, the people make them there. So there are a group of students, uh, were doing that. I thought that was fantastic. Uh, they need people to go through, uh, uh, to go through their, uh, their donations that they receive. If you're cleaning out your house and you find you have way too many towels, they take them. You have old sheets you wanna get rid of. Take them. You don't even have to go in. They have a donation bin outside, uh, at the entrance. So, uh, I know for a fact I have old towels that I'd like to get rid of, and I, again, you could see them being used when you go through there. Uh, or you don't wanna, um, work with animals, they need people to do a lot of administrative work, maybe, uh, uh, um, address thank you notes to people, uh, help, uh, prepare documents and things for the upcoming gala at the end of the month, and I know, uh, Brian helps to organize. So I just have to say, I know I, I started all of this, uh, maybe a month and a half ago, uh, when I said, I'm not really a dog person, uh, but I, 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 I think I have a whole new appreciation for the bond between uh, people and pets after this, and all they do for, um, for not only people, but the, the whole community and these animals as well as advocacy. So just be thinking, uh, what way you can help, whether it be them or any other nonprofit in our community. Uh, they certainly do a lot with very little, so, uh, just be thinking about that. Um, just to, um, uh, change gears for my last thing, um, I, I have a, uh, resolution honoring and proclaiming Thursday, May eighth, uh, this year as Law Day in the Village of Manans, given, um, what's happening in our country and, uh, people's, the fact that not everyone believes in the rule of law. I think it's important that we, um, uh, that we reaffirm our belief in that. Um, ever since I started teaching in two thousand and six, I've run a Law Day program at Shaker Junior High, now Shaker Middle School, and it's, uh, it's won awards at the state and national level, and, um, it's very important. Many, uh, some of the former students involved have become attorneys. Uh, and, uh, or understood the importance of serving on a jury. So, uh, with that, I'm going to make this resolution. Whereas on July fourth, seventeen seventy-six, representatives from thirteen, uh, separate, but the United, uh, but United States of America declared independence from a tyrannical king and proposed as their motto, et pluribus unum, or out of many, one. A phrase symbolizing the unity of a nation founded on the ideals of liberty, equality, and justice. And whereas the framers of the Constitution, seeking to prevent tyranny by any one group, separated the powers of the legislature, the executive, and the judiciary among our three branches of government, ensuring no one faction could rule unchecked. And whereas throughout our history, the American people have continued to pursue out of many, one, including the Fourteenth Amendment granting citizenship to all born or naturalized in the United States, and the Fifteenth and Nineteenth Amendments extending voting rights regardless of race or sex. And whereas the United States has always consisted of many viewpoints, religions, and experiences. And the trajectory of this country has been to include more voices, thus becoming a true representative democracy of the many. And whereas immigrants from around the world continue to come to the United States to embrace our shared democratic values and enrich our culture and economy. And whereas, despite all of our differences, American citizens, residents, and visitors alike are united by our belief in our hallmark civic values, including freedom of speech, freedom of the press, freedom of religion, freedom of assembly, protection against unlawful searches, right to due process of the law, right to a speedy and public trial by jury of our peers, and protection against cruel and unusual punishment. And whereas we, the people, are also united by our shared responsibility to contribute to the common good through jury duty, voting, taxes, and military or public service. And whereas the people are also brought together in pursuit of legislative initiatives that promote healthcare, education, clean air and water, emergency responses, and parks. And whereas public education was designed to serve as a unifying force, providing an economic benefit, instilling values of civic virtue, and bringing social classes together to form one educated citizenry. And whereas while the United States has made great strides in realizing et pluribus unum, inequalities persist, and political polarization threatens our shared sense of community. And whereas in nineteen fifty-eight, President Eisenhower proclaimed Law Day to honor the rule of law in the creation of the United States of America, and in the year nineteen sixty-one, Congress issued a joint resolution declaring May one as Law Day. And whereas the theme for Law Day twenty twenty-five is the Constitution's promise, out of many, one. And now therefore, I, Seth H. Harris, Deputy Mayor of the Village of Manans, and Brian Marsh, Mayor of the Village of Manans, do hereby proclaim May eighth, twenty twenty-five, as Law Day in the Village of Manans. We urge everyone to observe this day by promoting law and education and fulfilling our shared civic responsibilities and commitments to the values of liberty, equality, and justice that make us out of many, one. So moved.
I can.
Hold on a minute.
Alright.
Thank you.
On Wednesday, the school library will do their budget presentations at six thirty in the school. On Friday, they'll have their multicultural fest at six o'clock. Um, next Thursday is literacy night, uh, that's at six o'clock. Also, they are having a meet and greet with an author. Um, there'll be a book swap and some other activities, and the book fair will be open. Uh, just a reminder, May twentieth will be the vote, um, the school budget, the library budget, capital project, and there are two seats on the school board that are up. Um, and if you go at six o'clock, you can touch the evening of the arts.
Well, it's like, how for them, sorry about that.
This Friday at six.
Clerk's report.
Thank you. Clerk's report. Uh, since Don isn't here.
Yeah, okay, I, I'm dying for right now. Um, uh, nominating positions will be accepted beginning May sixth, twenty twenty-five, with the final deadline for submission set for May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, at five o'clock P M. On Thursday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, a drawing will take place to establish the order of candidates on the ballot. Applications for early voting and absentee ballots can be obtained at the village office and on the village website. Um, uh, Bill Garvey, uh, sent a letter to the village board, uh, in which he observed, uh, dog waste on village property that he reported.
Hold on, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have Bill summarize the greatest hits on that when we go to public on it.
Okay, sure, then, uh, that's all I have for a quick.
Could I, could I have one more change? Did I forget to mention? Uh, Brian and I had a, uh, gone last week to a meeting about, uh, going to Health Healthcare Consortium, that's the, uh, county building. Uh, and I, I asked, just as an aside, after the, at the end of the meeting, in regard to the Albany County, County Sweet Treatment Plant, whether they had got their approval for their plan for the, for the mitigation of smell. Uh, they have received their approval from DEC for the plan. Uh, they're hiring a company that's going to be in charge of that operations, hopefully, and they're setting something up, and I think this was mentioned before, setting something up on the county website to report if there are smells. So hopefully what we wanna see this year are less instances of those overwhelming smells, uh, if this plan that they're putting together works. Uh, going forward, and they said obviously it's gonna be two or three years, they've also got approval for their engineering plant to do a, you know, revamp of the, of the entire, you know, uh, your water system. So that's, that's, you know, what, that's the big thing on their agenda. But that's good for us. But I think just at least for them having a plan, you know, it's, it's gotta be a little bit of relief, hopefully, when the weather gets especially hot.
Having it been approved. Maybe when the time comes, we can get a link to that website on ours.
That's not a bad idea, yeah, that's possible, yeah.
Yes, as well as in the, uh, uh, Manans Monthly.
Yeah.
In this letter, QR code.
How about, or, sorry, how the comments?
Bill?
What are some things? Now, while driving and walking on some village, uh, village streets, I see and observe some people walking or riding their bikes on deep railway tracks. What should I do if I should see this problem occurring in the foreseeable future? The problem is, railroad property is not recreation, it's not playground.
I understand, but they're, remember, they're, they're controlled by, uh, railroad police. So.
Now, since I've been requesting, you know, since two thousand and eight, that our wooden salt and gravel store should be replaced with new metal salt and gravel store building. Now, is this true? They're gonna get replaced during the summertime? This is what I need to know.
Still looking for a grant to do that.
How, how much grant will we get?
Well, the building's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so.
If I was for a million.
You wanna write a check, you can, uh.
I, I can give you the money if I had it.
Alright. We're working on a grant, though.
But I want it done, it's gotta be done.
We want it done, too.
I've been requesting for seventeen years. Now, since I reported to the Manas Police and Clerk Don Marion about the combined two street signs and one stop sign on Street Street were falling towards the ground, it's also on Manam Room. I also, I'm delighted that we combined two street signs and one stop sign. The coast got straightened, plus I'd like to thank our public works guys for getting the job done. Now, since I propose installing green roof project for our village public works garage, plus prime and paint our public works garage building either orange or light green. I said, I would recommend use oil as synthetic rubber based paint. And I've spoken to the superintendent, Mike Haggan, which color he would like to have painted, whether it be orange or light green, so they're both my favorite colors, so if he might recommend it should be painted green or white green. Would you go for that?
Lot to look at it, Phil. The garage needs a lot more than paint, I can tell you that.
It needs some repairs, too, I know. Now, I'm requesting that the village board pass and enforce a village where it's forbidding bringing and drinking alcohol beverage in our village parks and playgrounds, plus post note alcohol beverage signs in those places. If there's gonna be a village picking, no alcohol beverage should be.
Well, I think a lot of people would disagree with you on that one, Bill.
Now, if you go to exhibition staging in Toronto, this is where the Blue Jays play. There, no beer is served at all because of provincial, how the Don Tera made a law, forbidden. Now, while the fish fry event's on the second floor of the village firehouse, which we are on now, I observe one rolling table blocking one fire extinguisher. I wish you proposed moving the fire extinguisher just far enough away from not be blocked off and the doors which leads to the kitchen. Now, anything blocking fire extinguishers is a welfare, public safety, fire and quality of life hazard. According to New York State law, the public safety law, fire extinguishers may not be blocked. One last thing. I'm very angry, dismayed, outraged, hot, red, hot, and upset that our state legislature again, had failed to get the New York State budget out on time, which late state budgets, first all local, including the village of Manis. If we don't pass, get our budget out on time, we get slapped with fines, surcharges, and lost the state aid. I got my own proposed penalties if the state legislature failed to get the New York State budget on time. Including fines, surcharges, be thrown out of the state legislature by the governor, be forbidden from ever holding public walks again, be arrested on criminal. be arrested on criminal charges daily to get the New York State budget on time, serve twelve years in prison, and be given very hard labor, and they pay for the road, moving board, medicine, food, and medicine. So how's that for the punishment?
Good luck with that one, Bill.
All right, well, thanks for letting me speak on these important topics, I'm done.
All right, thanks, Bill.
You're welcome.
Bill.
Uh twenty first by saying, you know, I'm a huge proponent of the police department, especially in our village where we are location in North Albany, Troy, where I live, I've always supported police. I'll be a big proponent of getting the S R O or C R O in the in the school. I I I have nothing good to say about that, but I feel that the unionizing of the management might not have been the best thing. Um just to for the clarification, you had mentioned Colony's chief is part of the union, he's not, uh neither is Troy's chief. But all that being said, it's it's taken place and and we'll see where that leads us in the future. I wanted to mention the fact that they weren't. Um and Tim, on the smell, I appreciate that, it's great to see Olden County's doing something about the smell. If you if you go down Broadway anytime after six o'clock at night, the smell goes away and it's overtaken by the pot smell from one hundred dog way because of people smoking in their cars in the parking lot. So it does go away down there, but it 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 builds its way back up the hill later on at night, so.
Hopefully this helps.
Appreciate it.
When they have going to us.
Thank you.
Steve.
My second one, Bill was saying, I I just don't rely or want to take their power away from um being able to deal with the leadership of police, especially if the leadership isn't doing their job in disciplining or addressing concerns with the officers. If you you've kind of chopped your leg off on being able to address those things.
How how does them unionizing affect our ability to forecause discipline and officer?
You you now don't, I'm not talking about the officers, I'm talking about leaders.
Management.
So when management is also in the union, you're not you're not addressing them directly, you have to address them through their union representatives. And their unions are usually pretty strong. So it's just a concern I have, and I guess my question would be, is the rest of your department heads in unions?
Uh no, however, Mike Hagman, for instance, as as members of the Teamsters, has the ability to go back to the Teamsters, should he not wish?
Go back if he doesn't want to be the department head.
Correct.
But the rest of your department heads are not involved in unions, so that if they weren't doing their jobs and taking care of the staff that you're employing them to take care of, you could discipline them directly and address it directly, not with union representation. So I don't know why you'd want to allow one part of your staff to be able to have leadership, have union representation in the wrapping up. If I was if I was in, say, Mike's position, I'd want union representation too. And I would say, well, if the chief gets it, I should get it, and then Don should be able to get it, and whoever the other department heads should be able to get it.
It came down, the way I see it, as parity, when you talk about Mike, when Mike wanted parity in pay, we actually, you know, upgraded his his title, and he did get, you know, most.
That's fine, but that's different than what I'm saying.
But well, but at the same time, there's we when when we're at this level and you need to keep, you need to keep, you know, it's hard to keep staff at this at this level of government. You know, everybody pays better and this and that and the other. One thing you have in hand is 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 making sure people are happy in their positions and that, you know, everybody gets a little hug and stuff.
I agree with you.
I I get what you're I get what you're saying, and if I can, concerns with with the way things were operating. And I know I can't speak for for down the road, but, you know, I don't I don't feel that even over, you know, most of the period of time I've been on the board, I had I had many issues with, you know, anybody in in the management side, so.
And and I'm not saying you do, I'm just saying that if that time comes now, you now have a different level that you've got to deal with it on, and not being able to deal with it directly with the person. They have union representation, which has lawyers, which has the whole nine yards, all the things that they pay dudes for and and pay for that protection for, so it's just a concern. And again, as I was saying, for equity, our the rest of the department heads, if they come and say, I want to be able to join a union, what what's your question or concern or ability to say no more to me?
I don't I don't think any of them have ever felt, you know.
I didn't say they ever have, I'm saying, so now you have one, you've said it yesterday, so now they all can. That's that's just a concern I have, that the board now has taken away some of their power that they have over their staff.
The whole idea behind unions, to be quite frank, hold hold on just one second, it it uh affords people due process, which was the uh huge part of the resolution that I read before. So we're not giving up uh power, we're uh it's something that if you go through the union, it provides them due process. You you unions get a bad rap these days, with whether it be teachers' unions, police unions, they they provide due process. So we're not, we're not actually giving up any power, we're just uh and they would have those same rights under civil service laws as well. So here, it just uh it um it provides it somewhat differently for them.
And I agree, so if they already have those protections, why would they need another layer of those protections above and beyond what they already had as civil servants, as you said? And and I and I get it, unions do get bad raps, but in my experience, unions normally protect your worst performing staff. Because those are the staff that you're trying to address things with, that go to the union. And then the union gets everybody that they have to support their member who's paying them for that. So I understand how unions work.
As as a uh nineteen year member of the union, uh can tell you that's and and who's been part of the union leadership, um I can tell you that's that's not the case at all, and again, my degree is in uh industrial and labor relations, I'm telling you.
In this school, is the superintendent and the principal union?
We're planning a debate here.
Right.
I'm not trying, I'm just, I'm just, I just say I have a concern.
Thank you. Do you have anything else, Steve?
No, I'm just concerned about that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Lisa.
Uh so so when you guys just voted to approve the August, the August, April, April twenty first minutes, are the accurate minutes gonna be on the website? Because the minutes that are on there right now, from the April twenty first meeting, sorry, the minutes on the website from the April twenty first meeting say that Tim was absent, and then halfway down the page, Tim is voting on this. Tim was not here.
Corrected minutes will be posted, they're only official minutes once we vote on them, and with Don not being here, that must, he must have put in this uh the.
They were on the website the day after the meeting.
So he must have posted this, he must have posted this, the what we follow along here at the meeting rather than what actually happened, so that's what, we'll get that clear.
So I like having the minutes, but if they're not the approved minutes, it should say draft, because they're the draft minutes.
Well, they should, they should say tentative, or they should say something.
Shouldn't be on there anyway until they're approved.
No, that's not true. According according to New York State, if you within a week or two weeks of your meeting, your draft minutes should be posted.
You're correct.
It's okay to post draft minutes.
They just have to say draft on them, yeah, and I believe that was an oversight from Don because he was going on vacation, he put them out there before they should have been.
Understandable, okay, thank you.
Yeah. We will make sure that that happens going forward. Anyone else? Uh anything else, anyone?
Actually, I I did have uh one more thing, um I just actually just got an email on this from uh the town of Colony. Uh back in March, uh Brian's embarrassed, uh back in March, I lobbied the uh Community Development Committee uh to give us a ten thousand dollar grant uh to fund ADA uh compliant upgrades at the village. And uh we um that was approved by the committee. Uh I couldn't announce it at the time because it hasn't yet been approved by the town board, but it has just been approved by the uh town board um to grant us that. Now, it depends, um we still have to find out what the town's allocation is from uh housing and urban development. Um and when we um we should know that by hopefully May fifteenth, but um and then at that point um the mayor will get a memorandum of understanding, uh but the fiscal year doesn't begin till July first with the uh um with the town, so they um we won't be able to access the money until that point. But again, we've been um awarded ten thousand dollars uh from the committee approved by the town board uh pending uh the allocation from Hunt.
That's goodness.
Yes, very good.
They don't usually give out, I mean, ten thousand dollars.
That, yeah, that that's unusually large for the last several years or more.
Yeah, it's usually like what, twenty five hundred dollars?
Yes, we got.
Four or five thousand dollars would be great.
Let's put it this way, we got the same amount that Colony Youth Center got, so that's.
They don't get much money.
Was that?
They don't get much money, so.
But that's but the last several years that we've applied for grants, we've been outright rejected. So uh this year, to get the full amount that we asked for is uh pretty huge. So um I'm proud of our village for getting that.
Anything else? All right, uh we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Hold on a second.
All right.
I'll see you later.
I'll see you soon, Bill.
Thank you for your time during last.
No problem, I'll get that letter to you sometime soon.
I wasn't even thinking.
All right.
Now that. So where where you got all that stuff that's a car sitting next to that dumpster?